And what the project is, is the Ainsworth is in the process of changing some of the processes.
Oh, sorry, I'm funny. Okay.
Yeah.
No, not a problem. As I started to say, Ainsworth is in the process of improving some of their industrial processes. It's part of this project that is they're looking to install a new peroxide tank near the frontage with the rockers groups. Because of the location selected, probably the only location we have available to us on the property, to not only meet some fire code issues as far as separation to the street, separation to the structure, separation to the parking lot area, while also trying to meet some of the requirements that Ainsworth has been keeping it, keeping the storage tank in close proximity to their processes. So we are seeking to relieve as far as placement goes, to take note. The setback actually is actually a little bit further back in the closest portion of the structures on the property. We have a small transfer storage containment area. This is about 12 feet from the property line on the road frontage. This will be about 12. The lock coverage area as far as the way the variance required there, we're already over that, so we're just at a small 13 by 14 square foot area for the storage. And I don't mind if you want to give us a little brief rundown. If you or Ford has questions, we can address it.
Yeah, this may be a brief rundown of what it is we're doing. So we dissolve silver with nitric acid, kind of the core things that we do. In doing so, use nitrogen dioxide, which is good. Currently, we have thermal oxidizer. It's basically a giant million BTU an hour natural gas burner. That's what we're currently using, considering that we've spent there for a couple of thirty years. We're totally compliant. It's working fine. There's no problem with that. But we, for years, our owners felt very strongly about reducing our emissions, getting rid of that burner. And if we do so, it'll cover that gas usage by, if we're supposed to pick it up, it's 70% or something. The exact tonnage is in there. I'll have my head and I forget. We're finally able to make the reality because we got it ranked from Maserta. And so we're working with Maserta. The D C has already approved it. And what the peroxide allows us to do is change our chemistry so that, I put the split diameter in there, but basically, we aren't even going to generate that.
Okay, check, check. I'll go behind the block right now.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So we won't even generate the nitrogen dioxide anymore, which is the primary problem. And now we'll be able to use scrubbers as opposed to using that giant thermal oxidizer. So it's going to be a lot less emissions on that community. It has nothing to do with making your products or processes. Our capacity, we're well below our capacity right now when we're here it, but our capacity is going to remain essentially fat, probably decrease delivery. And it's going to, because of the storage energy process, basically, two moles of nitric acid react with one mole of silver. One mole of nitric acid is cast off as nitrogen dioxide. The other dissolves with silver. Since the change in chemistry, we're going to use half the amount of nitric acid, which means half the amount of nitric acid tankers coming through the neighborhood coming through this. It's really a way around lock fronts.
Is nitrogen dioxide your pollutant right now?
That's the pollutant that we have to.
Can you imagine the change for more of it?
Nope. But the tank would be, so we use nitric acid to dissolve silver, and that's what produces the nitrogen dioxide. But by using hydrogen peroxide, we'll prevent the formation of it. But because hydrogen peroxide is an oxidizer, we can't put that into a big natural gas burner.
Just let's just pretend we're a tenant. How old is this?
Sure.
We're going to put our tenant out. Is there, what's the danger environmentally for the product that's being installed?
Sure. Hydrogen peroxide is a.
In what level of potency that you're having?
Yes. So we actually originally wanted to use 50% hydrogen peroxide, but that would then violation of the fire code. That's a class two. So we reduced the concentration to 27.5%, which is a class one. And it's, the requirements are quite assertive for that. It's not nearly as hazardous, 50%.
More of that.
You will require more volume, yeah. But the tank is going to be the same size regardless.
And New York State Department, our own considerations improve this?
Yeah. Yeah, there would be metal than about here or right there, there on the water, Maserta this one.
And as I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, the lock coverage of all existing is 79.65%. And the proposed is 79.83%, less than a 2% change. Point 2%. Excuse me, less than 2.2% change? Yeah.
But we're, we look at it from 50%. So it is a 37% relief.
I guess one question I have regarding that is that just to remove the obstacles in which you're asking the variance in the cars, why wouldn't you try to create more permitable payers for things along those lines that would then get back over there?
The building is.
Like if you permable pay which contains on the market that would then lock you down and you wouldn't even have that as an element. There's a cost. It's not like.
I guess I'm not sure if all of the, what is driving that is the difference in offset because we have that 22% increase in permits covered of needs of offsetting or adaptation. The need of offsetting is taking a bit of portion of the parking lot out. I will say this.
Not, not taking it out.
It's changing the surface of the parking lot.
I don't tend to understand your parking needs.
Right. And when I've been there, you tend to use much of the parking that is always allowed in the winter. The concern you always have running permitable payers when you're saying it's all, you know, that I messed up in what I thought. Because of me, it's not, not that it can't be overcome, but it's not bizarre.
You've had this discussion with businesses.
Oh, I sure have.
To get larger footprints in permitable payers.
I, I think that's, it's not something we can consider.
And then the other question I have is I notice that the whole tank from the front side is bothering the dog, but not the backside where you're having to look, see the drive-by or is it just a walk away?
Oh, it's.
That's the base of it.
Yes, several other bases, yeah. There, there is already some guardrail of all the, some parking lot.
It's, it's, yeah, it's all fixed.
We did have some significant public input last week regarding your operations. I don't think, yeah, it wasn't necessarily significant. It wasn't necessarily related to the, um, can we speak here too many times, I guess? There were some, but I mean, not the tank, yes. The not the location of the tank from the road. But there we do have the five chief, chief, fire, fire.
Fire forensics.
Fire forensics officer here tonight. I know there are a few questions. I guess we'll go through our application and we'll open up for what.
Would there be rate comments in regards to that or additional offers?
Eighteen months.
Okay, just.
Yeah.
Just so, okay.
Yeah.
Year by year.
Yes. And the existing footprint that's here, the one that's 13 and a half feet back, is that, or I guess it's a containment pit?
That's being meeting. That's the existing structure with the.
Yes, the existing structure being meeting. That's correct.
Well, just to the point, I don't know, I think it's absolutely relevant is that one of the things that was voiced were problems is amount of traffic and lab trucks and emissions, if you will. And if you're, by your description, you would need less truck traffic as a result of this. So that does somewhat like.
Reducing this.
I'd have, you know, address one of the concerns.
It will reduce emissions as well. I will say, in my primary point of understanding what is looked at as part scrutiny with nicer grants, D C approvals, it's pretty high bar at this point with the state. And for that to be on board with this type of product should be noted.
Yeah, as far as I understand, the, the fire code has been met. It's the local, our local land use codes is that word we're here to talk about. So it's from a safety perspective, it sounds like. There may be some, if you have any questions, you can talk there.
As far as I'm concerned, dependent of the product, the cost of material, and even in a closer proximity than we'd like, what you want it, it's been cut in a poker scheme to address that. So I think there's kind of a link as opposed to the comp. It could be that at a higher level.
Fewer emissions.
Yeah.
Traffic rates, that's, those are all.
From a local perspective.
No, thanks to. It's hardly, that's a sizable requirement of that.
So let you know, because you filled it out, area, area variance is required, have a five-part test. It's a balancing test. So if some of the questions are not, or have no answer or yes answer, that doesn't necessarily mean we don't have to, we have to balance the benefit of the applicant versus the impacts on the community. So we'll just go through this. Question one is, will the granting of the variance produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or may it determine nearby properties?
No.
I answer the applicant's data. No, there's no character of the neighborhood. And your description of the project seems to offset some of the concerns. Or seems to mitigate some of the concerns of the neighborhood raised last week. Explain if granting of the variance is necessary with the same result to be achieved by some other method not requiring variance. Have you evaluated other options for locations and things like that?
Yeah, it'd be much easier for us if we didn't have to get the variance, but, you know, we can find another location. But really, just for engineering and safety purposes, really, it needs to be somewhat close proximity. And as you saw, our area, our buildings already kind of fix up a lot of properties.
Explain if the variance is substantial, if not, explain why it's not substantial. Your current lock coverage variance is aggravated by, you know, less than 1%, but when we look at these, we do need to look at from the requirement, which is 50%. Proposed front yard setback should not be considered substantial as the hydrogen tank we've been wanting. I guess the relief requested is 60%, so that is still, that's a substantial relief.
It's preexisting.
Yeah.
It's not. Or new. You could look at both of them. I think you could look at it like, wow, you're substantially over, you're not even walking in the road. That's a preexisting issue. You could look at it as you're maybe getting there.
But that expansion on the non-different pre-existing use is not something we want to pray over. We want to say it's okay just because it's already there.
No, I think, I think you have a finance that there's something it's going to be.
So if we didn't grant it, I like to look at both sides on all of the margins. If we didn't grant it, it's still going to be 0.2%, a little 2, 0.2% less. But they'll have more traffic and they'll have more emissions. So which is a bigger challenge, which is a bigger problem?
Sure. That's why this is a balancing test. So we need to look at these questions and answer them regardless of how we feel about the application. So they add the, it is, you know, 60% is a substantial request. Actually, it's just, it's over 50%. But that doesn't necessarily mean we can't approve this application.
Right.
Four, explain if the variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions in the neighborhood. Now please justify why. We, I guess, addressed the, discussed the safety concerns. It sounds like this will be.
Eventually answers.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think that, that is a project. Explain if you're cheaper variance, you're self-created hardship, or self-created difficulty. If not, please explain. These are, I mean, these projects are self-created. So, you know, but you're approving your property and you're approving the business. But, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean we can't move forward with this. Sorry. With that, I'd like to thank you and we'll go and take any public comments or any. Um, with that, I'd like to thank you and we'll go and take any public comments or any questions we have. I know, um, do you want to? What if you may want to stay up?
Uh, Darren Work Department, Austin City, Glens Falls. Um, like the applicant said, we started off with class two, got down to class one, which alleviated a lot of the firepower issues that we're having. Uh, this setup, uh, they're meeting the code base of the medical community, I would think is to structure the only thing, um, really common I had was the, I'll give you a copy of that. Uh, it just needed to maintain that fifteen foot clearance. So in a three-deep crash, it just has to be a three, area of fifteen feet. So at my end, uh, car garage buys that's the insert. Uh, if we were to go there, they had the dumpster, um, within that fifteen feet, you had the structure in that tank, car garage. Uh, but if they're able to maintain that fifteen foot clearance, uh, that's really the only thing code buys that they're kind of running into because they're just need maintaining clearance and we'd be okay with it.
It's more than operations.
Right, yeah. Uh, and now obviously when they go to fill it, generalized maintenance, they're going to have things within that fifteen feet, they're authorized to do that. It's just they can't become, you know, an accessory structure or a permanent structure within that fifteen.
Have you run into either business, general business, having that situation here?
Not with this business. We've run into other similar things in where they, other companies would have to maintain clearance.
Yep.
And we've had some issues where things get a little closer, a little closer, a little closer. Um, this company, the past year they're doing this, uh, they work with us, um, they met with us quite a few times to get their plan kind of as safe and best as we could. So, um, as these applicants I have, they've worked with us very well.
Do you, what, how far is that, the location from that, the parking area? To, I can't, the other square.
It's got that, it's got the square right there, or not the square.
We got the stormwater, it's there.
It could be three, between.
Twenty.
Yeah, but.
Yes, it's about twenty, it's about twenty, just over twenty feet.
So you mean that?
From the first corner edge to the.
They're close to the parking.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any? Oop, is that? Okay, close up, okay. Um, do we have any other public comment here tonight?
With respect to seeker, I would classify this as an unlisted action. Uh, the applicant has submitted a short form, I want to review, we want to impact assessment. Number one, will the proposed action create material conflict with the document, the land, or zoning regulation? No, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the land? No, or small impact. Will the proposed action compare the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, like, you know, walkway? You know, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No, will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies?
No.
No, public-private waste water treatment utilities?
No.
No, will the proposed action compare the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna? No, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Based upon the answers to part of the impact assessment or to determine, um, a more issuing negative declarations. We need a motion for media agency and negative declaration.
I would like to make a motion that the Glens Falls Zoning Board of Appeals hereby accepts media agency status for Brett Walters, representing owner of TAP Stat number three zero three point one eight dash eight dash one. Located at twenty-one registry, the board has determined the action to be an unlisted action and has reviewed the short form environmental assessment form and upon the documentation and discussion, issues a negative declaration. Add a second. Can we, and all the papers say hi?
Hi.
Hi, okay, when you post, motion carries, thank you. So now on the table is a motion for the area variance. Um, I'd like to make a motion to, motion that the Glens Falls Zoning Board of Appeal hereby grant the application for the area variance for the project identified as area variance twenty-five dash zero zero three, located at twenty-one registry as presented at the meeting of the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five Zoning Board. Pursuant to the criteria reviewed in the area variance application, um, upon reviewing the application, I think, um, the board has determined that the benefit to the applicant does not outweigh the impact to the community and that, uh, we can approve this request.
I'll make a second.
All the papers say hi?
Hi.
Hi, when you post, all right, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you just follow up with Devon, you can give your own score.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, our next order of business is, um, use variance, U B zero 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 three, and Fitzgerald Esquire, representing Sarah and Bruce Whaley, owners of TAP Stat number three zero three point one three dash twenty dash seventeen. The applicant is seeking a use variance, bring their two family dwelling into compliance with the current Zoning regulations. Give us a little, um, please say your name for the record and give us a brief overview of the project.
Sure, my name is Everett Fitzgerald, um, here on the, the applicants, we have Sarah Whaley and Bruce Whaley is here as well. And so is Isaac too. So what we're here for is that they moved to fifty-seven Leonard Street in Glens Falls in two thousand twenty-one. They moved from Brent, where they were living in a single-wide home, which as you can see is not so suitable for Isaac's needs. So when they purchased in Glens Falls, they were looking for a property that had a separate dwelling unit. And then they had found one on Leonard Street with a house with a detached separate dwelling unit. It was advertised as such in all the pictures. And in fact, uh, when they looked at it, it would meet Isaac's needs, they made an offer on it, they purchased it. Not only were they not offered that price, because they had purchased the property, had they known there were use issues. It works out well for Isaac because this allows him to live independently, but have Sarah and Bruce right next door. They need to come see him and then he's closer to doctor's health here and all of his needs. So Isaac, as you can see, is neurologic, he's wheelchair-bound, so he can speak with you if you have questions. When they purchased the property at the time, the city had previously issued a permit for the property, a building permit, in two thousand ten to the fire owner. That building permit, well, maybe you could have been more specific, does reference the, have it attached here? It does reference a living space and a bedroom. And then. A. So the actual permit application doesn't have much information other than getting living space, family, and a gym. Then flipping that farther within that exhibit A, the last page, is the building permit. And then exhibit B, did not copy well, but I have a better copy, that was the inspection report of two thousand twelve, where they were issuing the certificate of occupancy, it does reference a bedroom and living space. So the time they purchased that was when it was on file with the city. And they subsequently, they moved in, Isaac's been living there, and they subsequently got another permit to actually renovate that space from the building department, renovated that, and were issued a certificate of occupancy for that. Also got a fence permit from the city, which not a renovation of the space, but no issues were flagged, good use of the property at that time. And then they went to get another building permit and that's when the building department looked at it and took the position that they could not issue a building permit because it was two-family use in a single-family area. And directed them here for a, some use variance. I would say Sarah, tell them that's what the most recent application is for.
Um, we went and we asked her, so, um, because, um, New York State, I was like, um, services, they accepted, is it a?
Uh, the, the exhibit is showing that you have a permit for a random.
As a, it's a C O.
Oh, the C O, the initial.
For two and a half years. And then all of a sudden they said it's not good, you need an actual C O, and we thought we had one.
Did they accept them? You don't need that specific.
It was the inspection certificate that the city issued after the initial building permit. It looked like they never actually had a building permit filed.
It was building.
Sorry, so they never had a certificate of occupancy filed after that. So they got the building permit, they did the work, the disapproval, the work, had the city go back and inspect.
Yeah, and I said, okay, that's not very interesting.
To improve the action.
Well, it says, the building permit, family living room and a gym. That, that's your exhibit A, am I missing something, building permit application?
That's the, the apartment, and then farther back, it's still within the, by the subject. Building permits, exhibit A, so it's exhibit B. This needs, this is what Sarah's referring to, this is the inspection report that the building department issued after it inspected that initial work. For the purposes of issuing a certificate of occupancy. And it indicated the bottom, and okay for C O.
Can you read that, or I can't read that.
Here's a better.
It says three thirteen twelve, how does it say?
It's, I noticed that.
It's three thirteen twelve.
I'm sure. It says three thirteen twelve, final electrical Commonwealth, that's what I, that's what I mean.
Me too.
Panel board, marks okay, smoke detector okay, electric period okay. Bedroom, living space, light and ventilation required and provided, okay for C O, and a checkbox for approved. Check somebody inspector on March thirteenth.
So the word you got, you went for approval, expecting that, meaning it was compliant?
Well, this were actually.
For a living room and it says gym.
Yeah, where's the gym, that's what I'm saying.
So is there a separate entrance? It's all split separate.
There's a fourth door and there's a, there's no gym, there's a.
But did you apply for a gym?
This is a.
This is a, uh, so this is part of the problem I was facing is that there was one thing on the building permit application and then all of a sudden in the inspection report, there appears the city's on all this, that there was bedroom and living space in there, indicated that it was okay for a C O. This, this was submitted, unrelated to you, but it was submitted to the state for the grant portion. The state was okay with this until a new person of the state started to give it, instead of needing the actual C O. So the Whaley's came to the city and said, well, it looks like you've issued a C O, and they have a copy of it. And the city found that there was no C O actually issued, you know, inspector, proof is, uh, I can only imagine they signed this. And went back to the office and had it issued.
Well, the certificate of compliance specifies that it's a single-family home, May twenty-third, twenty-three.
And then.
That was relative, looking to your fence, it references as a single-family home.
That is for the fence, for the.
Well, it's, fence is in relation to the C O. They're, they're.
Right, I almost don't even want to mention the fences, I don't want to confuse it, other than the fact that the fence is some additional evidence on our end that they applied for that permit and nothing described at the time as being compliant with the property. Probably the more relevant, probably the more recent building operation, which is.
The other certificate of compliance is from February one twenty-three.
Yes.
And it's when there was renovations done by this applicant, the roof, the shingle kitchen, the bathroom called grade L R four. And that also references it as a single-family dwelling.
All of those renovations were to the dwelling, the second Whaley's unit. The sum, yeah, so you did sum to the home, right?
Yeah.
So the building department at the time has not noticed that this unit existed and was doing the work there. And then issued, there was a permit and then issued a certificate of compliance after this most recent one.
For a single-family residence.
Can I ask a more planned question, or why do you need it to be a two-family? Why can't it be a single-family?
Because it's maybe, it's excessively, accessory volume and, uh, of.
What areas? No, no, I think you can't say it, it's not a different character of the neighborhood, I would be hundred percent aware of that. Who's asking, you're asking, you're asking, it's split, that's a two-family, right?
So right now it is a two-family. So I'll let Sarah chime in, I'll say, right now you're basically asking for the existing use, so that's two thousand ten to be continued. So whatever reason the city issued permits back in two thousand ten and then more recently, knowing, at least the reason why, knowing that this was here, then issued a certificate of compliance, so they're trying, essentially with the use variance, trying to get on the ground use to match what is in the building and current files.
Which would be?
Which would be a two-family use, so it's separate dwellings. The second dwelling is off the back of the garage, so you exit, enter, exit it separately from the main unit. And it has its own kitchen space.
Separate, uh, unit, one unit.
There's a cupboard, so it's an open area, but that's a cupboard right between the garage and the.
Like three rooms?
No, there's no, there's just the garage and then the apartment is still off the back of the garage.
So you have a house, garage, you have a house, a garage, and then the other?
Yes.
Is the, the.
Does the second unit have a kitchen and all that?
It has a bathroom, it has a kitchen, and it has a laundry room.
Is there a firewall separated on that back wall that aligns the garage, so it's some sort of firewall protection that's essentially in the plus the mouth space and it would be a walk-in unit.
So just to remember, this will be, maybe it was coming out of this, this is our.
Need to get into.
There's two rooms. There's two doors.
This is the.
Now we can add it.
Okay.
It looks.
If the doors are aligned versus right here, so you can enter.
Yeah, what I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to know, usually when you have, like, let's say a tunnel, where there's two units together. The mines that go all between them, there's a firewall, so they should go suit to guns all the way up. Therefore, if there's ever a fire, it doesn't come and affect the other unit. Like, when you have a level of protection of usually one, two, three hours, or whatever it is, usually two hours. Certain level of time, amount of time, a fire can come, or you have two hours technically to get out of your house and be safe. I'm, I'm wanting to know what level of protection there is between unit one and unit two. If you're looking to do this, I want to know what's there to protect both parties, whether that's you now, or some other family that has two separate units ten years from now.
Just an answer, because we're going to say that the original edition was instructed.
We have some, I do know. It's an insight.
More representation also. So, the fire code kicks in if three units are above.
Okay.
So, two units, one unit is considered, uh, for residents, we can't enforce fire code differently. So, that would not be related to existing building code, building code, as a saying. So, firewall is going to be required, because unless they put a third unit in there, uh, within the same property, then fire code would kick in. There'd have to be, uh, those limitations. But as a saying, right now, whether you look at it as a one-family, two-family, fire code's actually getting in.
No, no, no requirements or anything of, of, uh, radiant construction or anything?
Uh, building code may have certain things, but the actual fire code, like I said, they won't take in until there's three units or more there. Uh, building code may have, depending on whether it's, like, building, uh, existing structures, uh, existing building code. Uh, they may have certain things, but if you're really having to go back and look at what language it's built, what modifications, or what modifications were. So, it's based off of that code at that time, um, so.
I have a question for the city attorney, please. Are there any implications to the city, this variance, or this, uh, these variance were to be denied, given, uh, the individual who was being housed there is, uh, taken?
No. Any ramifications to the city, the applications was denied?
Be, would be.
Or not, nonsense.
I also have a question about the garage. It's pretty much like the lynchhead between the two units. Technically, you want to have the garage, like, at least a full step, if not more, lower grade, the top-to-top spaces, so if cars nearby, or if fields don't come into that, is that the case?
The personal vehicles in there, um.
That's what I'm going to answer. Great question.
Um, do you drive into the thing you want to get, drive, or you can put that right to your garage, do you have to step up into the other units?
You can't get into the, you have the garage, you can't get into the unit, but if you have to open the doors, you have to step up to get. He goes, stop it, or we have a, we have a bad door.
Not, the word is understand, this is a completely detached unit from the garage, from the main unit.
Correct, well, it shares a wall with the garage.
It doesn't.
Wall.
Am I, am I correct?
It does share a bathroom, shares a wall with the garage.
Yes, okay.
So, it shares a common back door with the garage.
Back of the garage and front door.
Okay.
There's issues on that.
Okay, I'll make sure everybody, myself and Torno, understand.
Yeah.
So, that's either, um, uh, either whole, each garage?
You have to get out of the front, basically, door in the garage, then go somewhere else.
So, that's.
Goes this house to the garage, to this house.
Devin, without fully understanding the history of this property, it appears that potentially somebody got a building permit and built something else. Uh, were you able to find any other records related to this property? In our record keeping, it wasn't great at that.
Uh, Devin was all of a sudden landing court duty for the city. Yes, as you stated, the record keeping, uh, of the predecessors of our department, uh, which still are employed by the city, was rather horrendous throughout this stretch. Uh, we provided the applicant with everything that we had, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Fisher, he's almost had to think that it would take him. This was really all we had to do to execute.
I did, I did attach, pretty much, I don't know that I left anything out, so, everything, the way they said, that, uh, that they had got from the code department. So, we did in two thousand ten, but then again, labor wanted, they applied, not when Devin was working at the city. But they were, received a building permit to renovation on this second dwelling, additional to main dwelling at that time. Including the grant for it, and it was approved.
Did that application indicate that this is a two-family, or was there a place to indicate that?
I don't think so. It goes through, um, compliance, the rest of the city.
Look at the real estate, it's a lot, it's, it's. Did the building department file, where they, where they, that renovation, that said you got in there?
Yeah, they had. I don't make sure.
And that's what made sure, certificate of compliance in two thousand, uh, twenty three.
All right, well, thank you for walking us through this, it seems like some, um, conclusive history there. Uh, we just do, for our findings, need to go through the application, kind of discuss that, and we might, they have some additional questions, just to remind that, okay?
I would say, I do understand this coming before the long order, the dealie, this would have come before fifteen years ago, with a different owner. We have an owner who not built it themselves, not, not as if they built it themselves and they're seeking permission out of the back. Not as if they started it, used it themselves, but they're continuing to use this one use here. Crew recited that they, they were told that they couldn't get any more building permits for the property, but they're not. Not to jump to exchange, but essentially the property, there would be no return for them if they, then were here, because they wouldn't be able to use it. Isaac, you really have to know, not just question of mine, if this property's still being used.
Uh, I guess that's the question for you, are there any other two-family homes on the street?
Two or?
Yes.
A mall, yes. Where, um, where are the doors? There's a, it's more.
There's actually multiple two-family homes on our street.
Can I ask a question, Devin? He can continue to live there, whether it's classified as a single-family or a two-family. So, the thing is, is if he's not living separate from our family, he will get no more help from OPWBD.
So, that. He needs to be essentially living independently?
Yes.
For that classification, and you want to be there to make sure he's okay while he's still.
We do not want him in there, so.
No, I get it.
So, we don't.
So, it's like top five, you've got a life, and I totally get it, that's, right?
My guess.
I don't want to speak for you, but.
That is, but he can live there legally as a single-family residence.
But he won't get the financial assistance?
The answer is yes.
Yeah.
He can live there legally as a single-family residence.
Uh, yes, the issue is because we cannot legally provide them a CO at this time, stating what they, when the answer is.
But when we change this, they, if, if we change this, then they can get the CO.
At that point, the building department will be able to do an inspection initially, so.
Yeah, except like, just so it's better, there's a multi-step process, right? You see, very.
Okay, we'll just go through this, um, this application. It's a variance request, it's a little, it's a stricter review, um, for a loose variance. So, the first question is, the granting of this variance is necessary in order to realize a reasonable return and lack of, the lack of potential, as demonstrated by competent financial evidence? And the addendum, it mentions that they purchased the property for a loan of three hundred thousand dollars and have invested in since. Um, do you have any estimates on what it would cost to turn back to a one-family? Have we had a?
No.
That was there.
Right, but we need to kind of discuss about that. All right.
Is there other issues?
We don't, we don't know.
I have any evidence.
Essentially, track of this meeting, in this case, will be whether to continue to dive or not.
Second question is, please explain, like, hardship related to the property, question is unique and does not apply to some same portion of the district or neighborhood. So, this mentions other nearby properties in the R one B zone, do not have a similar actual dwelling unit, therefore the hardship's not due to the general neighborhood conditions? Um, I guess. Related to the, to the neighborhood conditions. I guess the question is, is there a reason this is a two-family, that, that this, we're granting this as a two-family? Because of the conditions of the site, it's kind of, this isn't a traditional use variance. Um, yeah, so I guess.
I think, my mind, if I was looking at this new construction, I might be the case, but it is, it already exists. Working out, like, there's, there are some in neighbors that are all spread out to the wrong grounds as well, but it's not the dominant character of this neighborhood.
I guess the hardship is that this was, this is existing when it was purchased. Um, all right, character, so the third question is, please explain, if requesting variance will alter the essential character, or if it could, or will not alter the character, please explain why. Second, how proved, do you move in and has a danger of use, and will not be changed to professional, commercial, industrial, other type of use? Only one additional dwelling unit, and requested additional apartment is looking at the rear of the garage structure and is not generally visible from the street.
We also have several letters from the neighbors, or in that, there's a few neighbors that have gotten it from public.
Oh, yeah, I wonder.
You want to speak on that?
Let's go with the one round. Explain if you need for a variance, is the need, oh, this is, this is a self-created hardship. Um, Sarah and Chris Whaley did not create the mother-in-law apartment at the property, nor did know of the non-occupied nature of the mother-in-law apartment when it was purchased. The real estate listing shows separate dwelling unit. And city residents, city records indicate that building permit application had been submitted in twenty ten by previous owner.
And I'm, I go back to the, them not asking for a use they created, or they, you know, prior to that. And not only the physical structure, but right now, the actual use.
I would also, I wonder that, uh, yeah, they, they purchased the home with the understanding of the, the arrangements, because it's a situation. So, it wasn't even, they just got lucky, and went out this unit for an extra income, this was, this was.
Very short and specific for the actual purchase. Yeah, you guys misled.
Yeah.
Is that a fact?
I understood, however, it is buyer's responsibility to correct annual reports when they purchase a property.
Yeah.
Um, is there any other questions, comments on the board before we do open, or before we open the floor?
I want to just say, it's, it's certainly certain factors, uh, it's, it's, it's various, uh, but I think it's, it's quite first.
You have others? Oh, we're not, but not from.
See, all, all of them, I, I couldn't agree more. Anyone else will say that my concerns are not in relation to you guys, your situation doing that, it's more about when that happens. Um, is it, um, the bar chief there, um, the rest of the situation of the safety, if just up and settled two years, whatever, right, what happens? And the next family comes in, it is now a two-family, is that safe for them in that part? That was really my concern, not necessarily you guys today, but the next person who has the same issues. So, that's what.
And from, uh, okay, my perspective, I don't want to sound unempathetic, I understand the situation, I, we do need to look at it, but these four, you know, these four series, that's just this New York State law. Um, so, also, variance is stay with the property forever, so, or at least we need to think about that.
Yeah. But, so I'd love to hear a little more, when, when we're done, guys, we'll put up about the nature of the neighborhood having multiple two-families. That would be, uh, I think somewhat important in relation to what we're, uh, as well as your letter, saying the right people, I think that's right, too.
Thank you very much. Um, has anyone from the public should speak? I do wonder if anyone remembers when I was, if it remembers when I was.
Apologies for my raspy voice. My name's Edward Burges Jr., I live at three on Four Leonard Street. Um, just wondering, I happen to buy the house, trying to take on to them, they're my household, so, I call them, I think, over there. I know, I work with Sarah's grandmother, John. Um, I've known my sister for a long time, not best friend, but I know my sister, and it's, uh, it's a guy I have, who we do every day. The self-safety, it's magnificent place, I appreciate all you guys say of your concerns. I understand that work is, uh, you can carpenter, as well as financial services, but I understand the fire code part. That's, my perspective would be, okay, broke up, there's a firewall, you know, fire, we do that everywhere, that would create some of that. Um, the place is magnificent, it really is one of the shining stars that makes me want to handle it. So, I don't, I don't see the issue with the neighborhood, I want to say that they, they do well out there, and everybody helping out, the, other neighbors nearby with, under storm, you know, helping out all that stuff, so. Want to, well, to say my two cents is, uh, approving this thing, portion of the, I can't, all the office, for this, I gotta create a situation, and my perspective is, well, we buy for essence.
And, and, and you notice, or would test, that there are numbers, two-family homes in and around that area?
Uh, put it on the street, I, I don't know the exact, but I know there's rentals, so, multiple two-family, there are not just one place, yes, there's something up on the street, not buying.
Yeah, even around here, it's, it's.
Well, though, that half of the street is a different zone of the street.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that creates a strange, like, right, because you can, one side of the street, you can do all the things, right? Yeah, yeah, exactly, yep. So, that's also something that we should consider, that there are two sides of the same street.
There are rules across the street, and so.
Yep, right, thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Jared Verulo, I live at sixty Leonard Street, right across the street from them. And I've been living in that residence since two thousand three. Um, it's kind of, to get clear that when the permit was given to put that issue on the house, who was never intended to be a gym. Um, it was actually intended to be, be a mother-in-law apartment, the family that lived there wanted their mother-in-law to stay in the back. And that's what it was there for the entire time, so, you know, the city was misled, um, when the permit was put in. And the mother-in-law, they lived there the entire time, she didn't leave California for a brief period of time, but then she came back and she lived there again. Um, then when she moved out, the cousin moved into the back, who was another member of the family. So, it was always intended to be a, a separate residence. Um, otherwise, I could say, no, it's a different, and it said that the place is a magnet, um, I have actually a property that lived right across the street from it, um, free.
Thank you very much, that's great insight, for time, yeah. Is there anyone online, no, okay.
Because it's a use variance, and it has to be classified as an unjustified action. The applicant is submitted to part one, we need to review part two. Will proposed action create material conflict with the document, land, or zoning regulations? No, it's more in fact, will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use plan? No, will proposed action repair the character of quality of the existing unit? No, will proposed action have. No, will proposed action have an impact on environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Now, will proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect the existing infrastructure from mass transit, the right, biking or walkway? Now, will proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate recently available energy conservation on the local and FDR communities? Now, will proposed action impact public private water supplies? No. Public private wastewater treatment utilities? Will proposed action repair the character of quality of historic archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resources? No. Now, will proposed action result in an adverse change in natural resources and its wet, its water bodies, groundwater, air quality, coral ponds? No. Now, will proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, drainage problems? No, proposed action could be a hazard to the environmental resources or human health. Basic on board review, issue a negative declaration.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion that the plan is called zoning court appeals, hereby accepts lead agency status for Edgar Fitzgerald Esquire, representing Sarah and Bruce Whaley, owner or agent of the property located at 57 Leonard Street. The board has determined this to be an unlisted action and has reviewed the short form environmental assessment form. And upon documentation and discussion, issue a negative declaration. Okay, please have a second. Second by Mr. Hines. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And to the, the request. I think we're seeing a lot of these lately, and it is kind of a credit to Devin and the planning zoning department because there are things happening in the city that were going undocumented for quite a while. And it is a great step forward to bring us into compliance and understand what's happening here. So, I think with that statement, and I think having this setup seems to be something that really helps the Whaley with their own situation, and they, they need it for the state. And after reviewing the answers to the variance, of the area variance, uh, sorry, use variance application. I would like to make a motion that the cons hold some appeal, hereby grant the application for the use variance for the project identified as Sarah and Bruce Whaley, owners of tax map number 303.13-2017, located at 57 Leonard Street, as presented at the June 16th meeting of the, of the ZDA. After reviewing the test, I think the applicant has shown to meet the stricts to be required for use variance. And I don't believe any of the conditions to meet this. So I'd like to hear my motion, so, second, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, thank you, please pull up with Devin and he can get you all spurred away. I lost it. The second?
No, I don't, no, no, I, I'm, I'm. What was the last, eighty seven?
Yes.
Devin, you need to go over there. As this, you like, wrote them, so we, this is, this is, um, update. All right, now to the last item. We have area variance 25-009, Jason and Lori Culver House, owners of tax map number 309-7-8-14, homily known as 82 Sherman Avenue, are seeking an area variance for front yard setback relief of 12 feet from the required 15-foot minimum to extend a pre-existing fence with new material. The applicant also seeks to leave from the code to build the fence at a height of 16. Okay. Is the applicant here this evening? Can you tell us a little bit about your project?
Sure. So we first, well, roughly two years ago, there was a, there existed a chambling fence that, uh, reposed as a backyard. Uh, when I got in that, in March, I was, like, a little bit built on a lot. There's different, definitely recommendations which I, so basically, there are sections of the chambling that are most, uh, very, 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 very short term materials. They were, and, were related to it, it's not the, just a rapid, because the, the extension basically just need to align it for the kitchen, space out, so that it doesn't have. Do you want to change, would you essentially change the fence from chambling wood, making it three feet, two six? Correct.
And just to that, like, end of that addition with that?
Right. Plus, it's following this one block, it's the whole border, people have pockets, and they're up like great park. And then decide on the house, or it's, yeah, it's, it's, you know, same, 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 the, 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 so it just, yeah.
But the, yeah, but the extension piece, it would just come up a little bit.
Oh, yeah, to that, to that, to that, yeah. This was our last one.
Yeah, well, you didn't.
Yeah, and I remember why. It's a, Devin and I, this is, like. Oh, secondary, oh, oh, you need both. Correct. The only concern I had when this first came up was about vision. But anything that you're putting up that's high is well set back from the corner, so it's not going to get it. The issue is, like, drug, you can see around it.
Parking is at the driveway.
Oh, the parking is exactly where it is today.
See through the fence today.
But, but.
But you can see through the fence today.
Well, I mean, I, I get it. So you're, oh, you're saying as they're pulling out, you're gonna be seeing those, or? You're still seeing the rear view of the lights, which you're, yeah. Yeah, I get what you're saying.
I would say, are you planning to replace it right where, put it right where this current fence is? So you still have that little garden, but that's what it is, yeah. Any questions from board?
I guess the only concern I have is that your sidewalk, on a person, I know the sidewalk, you're gonna have only, you're gonna have a little bit of a limitation of what you can do with your snow, because you got a fence that's right up on the edge. Now, it's chain length, for a cruise, you can, but it's a solid fence. So that's just gonna be a challenge, I feel.
Is that a little sad?
What's up?
They said this was before.
Pretty much, yeah.
So, like the others, we'll just go through that. Well, the granting of the variance produces undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or may be a detriment to nearby properties. The applicant states granting of the variance will not produce undesirable change. Materials proposed to be more studyable, these same will be used only at the 82 Sherman Ave property. Any questions? To explain if the granting of the variance is necessary, whether the same result could be achieved by some other method. It's variance, so it's not actually existing, that's not why, for other reasons. Okay, so it's just gonna be in line with all the, yeah. Explain if the requested variance is substantial. Requested variance is not substantial, fence currently sits at the perimeter, you're hoping to extend 16 without moving the step adder. And then four, will this have an adverse effect on the neighborhood? No adverse effect or impact, proposed project will be improving existing conditions. And is this self-created? Fence was here when we purchased the property years ago, technically, it's itself considered. That's not a name changer, that's not, doesn't necessarily prove this application. Any other questions from board?
I don't.
Anybody in the public wish to speak? Uh, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Please state your name and record.
Hi, Julie Burton, neighborhood, um, in the early years, on 2 Morton Street.
Okay.
So property 15 slash 15. So our concern is, according to this, would be extending where the fence is, pushing it out to actually where the sidewalk is. There's no way it's right from the way I read it. And he's looking to go up in three feet to six feet, and it's considered a front line because he's a corner lot. And it will obstruct the father's driveway. We're also close to the school, so there's lots of children walking, and then that means it's a worst.
What you're saying is gonna obstruct your father's driveway, how is it, service?
Because you can't see the sidewalk, and you can't see the service without pulling onto the sidewalk. And if you extend that fence, it will up six feet, you're extending your way to the sidewalk.
Yeah, I was gonna be a little more closer.
These are going up six feet, so you can't see who's walking down the road.
That, that was my concern, but, okay.
My father's going to grab, he's going, he's got a 48, he's going to 16. So he can see.
So, so that's your objection, is the height more than anything? Not the real location?
And coming out of the sidewalk.
I mean, it seems like it's pretty much the exact same location, minus the one dog here back coming back to the house, no?
It's not the same location, from what this says, extending, you're, you're looking to, you two variances.
You're looking to.
To do the variance for the height, and to extend it out to the sidewalk by three feet.
Um, I believe it's gonna go, it's gonna go to the front, it's at the sidewalk, two, it's gonna extend it towards Sherman Ave. I believe it's that's the intention, yeah. It'll stay, I believe, at that, where it is located right now, is that, farther back? So that's, how many feet, three feet for your sidewalk? Um, is that location where it is right now, is that okay? Is that, is that, so, as long as that?
But you can also see through the fence.
Right.
So if he puts a blocking fence, 16 feet high, we can't see.
So now, the, there already is that stocky fence between your houses.
So my father's fence has come that further, you see, that they go all the way out to the lady post. That was the purpose of that, to give his sight.
Is your, is the home, the one that's on the other side of the white fence?
Yes.
And the issue is about coming out of the garage and then now?
So we have a very long driveway. So if you come out of the driveway, they put a fence up 16, it, it's a block, it, it obstructs your mission. And like I said, we live here, he lives here in a high school, in a middle school, there's lots of good traffic, people walking their dogs. It's just, it's a, obstruction, which creates worries. And I have a picture from my father's driveway now, where you can see. So our concern is the obstruction.
What would you say the gap between the current, the current chain length fence and the end of your stocky fences?
A few feet.
A few feet, okay.
Are, are we talking about this image?
Yeah, right, we're seeing the gap, yes.
Right here?
See, between that stocky fence and the?
Yes, 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 yes.
So that's, that's our.
Oh, that part, where it goes back, I can see that, I see it just going, uh, I guess the way it's drawn on, on here shows as if there, that white fence goes all the way out to the street. But it's not, I see the image that shows the time.
It does go all the way out, the other way.
It does actually cut it down to a little, you know.
Correct.
So, yeah, it's not just.
I guess I'd like to give confirmation of the attempt that is, is gonna basically.
Yeah, it's gonna be obstructive.
Well, yeah.
There's a height differential between those two properties, too, it looks like. Doesn't have a, yeah, it could be a little, it's like a little retain, well, maybe it's changed.
Yeah, a little retained, but the drive goes up.
Okay.
Um. Yeah, yeah. So, let me ask, maybe we can come to a mutual resolution, is that like? What if he had six feet, except on the back end, and that was more like four feet?
But the, I think if his, his property goes straight down the sidewalk, if, if, I think he's going to obstruct, I think he would.
I mean, if that fence on the, I'm gonna call this the south, this is the south edge of this property. Is the one in question, it's both the south edge and how it connects back to your, the gap at the end of your fence to the driveway edge, right? So I'm saying, what if that portion was four feet?
But then that front part is still 16, you can try, you'll see it under it.
Next, if you go through the way, if you see that, I have to a picture of it, it's a perspective.
I'm saying if this was four, that would be the dog here.
Oh, that whole part, yeah.
Now, you'd be able to see when you're backing on this one.
Well, you can see, so.
But I don't want, I'm trying to let that with privacy factor.
No, yeah, it'd be worse, we're not. Yours is about 16? It is, it doesn't go all the way, it's out, which is why it doesn't.
And to the out, you're gonna put it in the exact same spot where it is now, so you're still gonna have that planting bed and the logs there?
That's a question that doesn't quite seem.
So you're off the sidewalk by a few feet.
By three feet.
By three feet. So if he pulls off and looks around, he's got three feet plus the sidewalk, plus the little grass strip. You've got eight feet, right? You live next door.
Yeah, I live at 82 Sherman, I'm a, I'm a, a court ward, council member. I live right next door to Jason, and there's, you know, a strip between, and Jason's a mail carrier, so I usually clear the snow in the meantime, because he's off delivering mail through the rain, smelling asleep. Um, so there's plenty of room.
So that planting bed is a couple?
Yeah, exactly.
And sidewalk, is your sidewalk there three feet?
Yes, uh, it might be four.
So you've got at least two, three, plus three, that's six, plus the grass strip. You've got eight feet for a truck to pull off.
Yeah.
What about people on sidewalk?
I mean, we'll be over the sidewalk.
That's why I'm saying, I was just, I was posing that the southern part here, that nib, would be four, and I think that that would.
That would give them a chance to look.
I think it allows you to see crossing down.
I, I think there's plenty of space.
I don't know if you're a mentalist or so. So.
I would even, would be a mentalist, my, even with where the white line is on that side.
I don't even think that would work based on where the shed is drawn here, but maybe a.
Oh, no, the shed, the way.
The shed, no, we got drawings and we got photos, photos are worth it. I mean, not, yeah, I think, no, that's, I think you're losing, losing your backyard. If you're a mentalist, lower the fence height, four feet on that south wall where the dog here is back.
Until it hits their six-foot stop waiting, you ever.
I think, I think everyone, all partners would be.
That would be kind of, no, because on this street, Morton, it's still gonna be six feet. On, Morton, this is still gonna be six feet.
So from here over, here, but she's, they can still see from here out, like, you're only looking, this, this, you have to see all the way across the street.
It's something, it's outside of the neighborhood.
I don't know, if they follow back, now we're here, I look here, I just have to see here, I don't want to see.
I would also say that walking down Sherman on both sides, there are stocky fences that come up closer than this is, without hearing as much room to see around. without nearly as much room to see around. So, I don't see, see it as, even just like, if you went out and looked across Katy Corner, down the street, there's one that's pretty close to the sidewalk, probably like a foot from the sidewalk, and then, you know, doesn't have as much of a buffer as this does, so I feel like it's kind of something that is normally seen on insurance, that there are a lot of fences that come, you know, side.
I have a fence on my side, it's right near the sidewalk, and I, I pull, I go very slow, make sure there's no kids, and I look directly past myself.
Yeah, you're right at the spot for the crosswalk.
All the crossing guard, all the traffic is, and my fence is, well, it's five, under the lattice at the top.
And it's just in order, uh, would the lattice be better, like a, like a lattice to see through?
No, you don't really see through.
I mean, I, I think, I think if that, if the applicant's amenable to a shorter fence in that section, it would, it would make the neighbor feel more, feel safer backing out, we can maybe proceed with this. So, let's look at this. Um, I, let's, let's have a little more conversation, please.
Are we able to put these type of?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Do, would that, Terry, would that make you guys feel more comfortable if this, I mean, if you wanna see this, what I'm just sketching here, the south wall of it, and how would it come back to, um? What's that?
I don't know that you're fixing it. A south wall, yeah, their, their fence is six feet tall, so you're gonna have four-foot fence inside a six-foot.
Not this, well, it, so I don't have two different colors on here.
Here, next to one.
There you go. This is six foot. This is six foot, that matches the guy's, this red would be the four foot, so when you're backing down here, you can see across, uh, that. I mean, I, I don't think you should lose, you're offering it when you're back here, but to me, you know, it's not, you should lose, you know, four foot deep across the.
It's not a, it's not.
Yeah, that's not, that's, I think what they're saying is six foot all the way here, and then dropping it to corner.
No, well, that's, that's why I'm more, I'm guessing, on St. Asia, well, if, if he was unable to, what I just heard, that, that.
That would be more, yeah, because he's sixty over.
Because I think you're very, it's.
And I understand what you're saying, you can slow down one, an inch out, but I think, I think, you have ordinance, since they're there for a reason. And where your property lot or school district, and it needs, even a consideration for safety, so.
I thought we were talking about doing this a lot more in this front, that additional.
That's the one.
Yeah, do this four feet, yeah, yeah, this four feet. Yeah, I think you decided, because this is the one.
This is, this is theirs. There's six-foot fence already, that's why you're, this not, this is the white fence right here. No, I don't, no. Is it more?
This is there.
Wait, so this here, this, yeah, this is their driveway, this is the next one.
And you're right, this, you're backing out of this.
They have a six-foot fence, they're rushing.
But it doesn't, it doesn't go near the edge of the property, so we can see.
It's about sixty.
Yeah.
It's nothing like, we can see.
You can put a fence up, so it'll be four feet.
You can see how far back, because it go here into, to the edge here, nowhere near, to like, the, is it going? Like, you can see that's the corner, so that it's there to your.
Yeah, that's, that's. So, that's, that corner that we're talking about, you said right here?
Yes.
The driveway for this house is right here.
Their driveway, their, ours is there.
So, their fence actually ends like right there, like, and ours is already, it's a. Right, so, so I guess the discussion will be. All right, well, well, see, I don't, I don't, that's, that's, that's not your council, but, but I think that's a little too much. Well, what if that was, what if this portion right here was up here to here, right?
Yes, yeah, because it's like thirty feet right here.
Problem is, this is gonna be six feet, so you're not.
Right, right, that's why I, that's why I said this. I don't understand why.
That is forty-six.
Oh, yes, right.
It's a little, you're right.
Yeah, I think so. The neighbor could pull up fast or anything, that nature is just, yeah, I mean, I think if it's a considerable, I can hold it there, there's lots of.
They're doing exactly what their neighbors have.
Right. Yeah, that's a pay, don't, so.
I think. I think if he's amenable to. On the, on the south side, on Morton Ave here, yeah. Because that fence is probably six feet back from the road.
Oh, yeah, like the end point?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're changing something, so.
Correct.
Correct, correct.
Four foot, you're not gonna see it, and here, you're not gonna see it, you're not gonna see it to that six foot.
I, I.
I guess we'll get back to basics of the, what, um?
I agree.
What is your objective in installing this fence?
Say, added price scan outside for our dog, and to repair the existing chain link.
Okay.
Like, is ready to get rid of that chain link fence?
Right.
It's still gonna sit three feet back through the sidewalk, all the way up that side, so there's gonna be three feet of space from where the fence ends. You have three feet, then you get a sidewalk, then you're gonna be up to there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I, so, the basics of this, can we achieve this purpose?
Yeah, at the Empire.
So, we know there's a lot of these fences in the city.
Yeah, at, at Empire.
But as we established previously in this, in this meeting, there was not a lot of enforcement in this city in the last ten years, so we don't, so.
But I'm, I'm just saying, if it's, uh, about creating a safety hazard, there is across the street something that hasn't created a safety hazard, that's closer than school.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I gotta say, yeah, it seems amenable to, almost, and to make it, let him take care of his chain link fence.
Yes.
Put a wood fence in, and be a good neighbor, so, I, all in all, I would leave it up to, I would, I would put the restriction on the four feet, but I don't think it's gonna do that much, but I'm fine with that. Meaning proving it with the contingency on four feet on that stretch. That, that, it's already, I mean, I'm happy because.
So, you're saying four feet, um, basically, yeah.
Up here. Yep. And, and four, you're, yeah, you're, yeah, but, and that's, and that's my point, is it's like, my, or is it, you know, see across?
Is it three or four feet? That's a lot.
The height of the fence.
Is the, is the height, is it three or four foot?
That's a lot, yeah, yeah, I said.
In, um, the, inside, yeah, the, the.
Yeah, I, I think it's, of course.
Yeah, absolutely, there has been some way with the definition of three feet, depending on the type of, the type of fence.
Okay.
As this was expressed in the, in the board, but, yeah, but it's, some of those pigments that will want them, or else is that four feet? But then, like, it comes out, so it's just a little top.
Sure, okay.
I like, I, in, in, in doing projects, it's very interesting to hear, well, if they, what's a basic per seller, and then what the math is involved with it, people are, they get creative with the great interpretation, how much is what, to people.
I will say that's not much interpretation, that I, you know, the, the, the department, just want to, that it's serious, it's not that.
All right, thank you. All right.
To me, to me, I would like it with four feet around the old, I mean, somewhere around. Uh, I know I'm saying, I would prove a better answer with that, one can.
There on our, I think, if that, and will that? Will that, would your, as the neighbor pulling out, was, was a four-foot fence there, would that make you feel safer, the? Yes, okay. And, can the applicant, that would help, that would achieve your purposes? Okay.
I respect the seeker, I would classify this as a type of interaction, as granting of an area of variance for a single, female resident, or your former for interaction, is required.
Yeah? So, it's on our discussion this evening, I would like to make a motion that the Blensville Zone of Appeal hereby grant the application for an area variance for the project I have at eighty-two Sherman Avenue, um, presented at the July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five meeting. After review of the balancing test, I think the, the applicant has met all the criteria with, and however, we will place conditions on this request, that the portion of the fence on the south side, no, yep, south side of the driveway on Morton Avenue be four feet.
First portion, first, the west, southwest portion.
Yeah, we want to do the southwest corner of the fence.
The southwest corner of the fence along Morton Avenue, does that work, okay?
The first section, or southwest section.
Okay, with the remainder. Being allowed at six feet. Um, additionally, the second variance at the, granting of the variance to extend the fence line northwards towards Sherman Avenue. Is that an additional six feet? To grant the setback relief of twelve feet from the required fifteen-foot minimum. Okay, I think that's it, all right. Can I have a second, please? Second, may I, um, all the neighbors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, you opposed? All right, motion is carried, thank you very much, thank you very much, you can, um, uh, follow up with Devon and Elitch's word, like. All right, um, if there's anything.
Grab a lotion to a germ, please.
Right, thank you for, for your, um.
So, we're not here, then you get to wash.
Yeah, sorry, that's, uh, that was canceled on my calendar, and I have no idea why.
Well, thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you were texting, I was like, but yeah.
Yes, yes, you know, I am.
Literally, I'm thinking my constitution.
Okay.
I just, I just want.